Would this meeting please come to order? This is our last meeting with our esteemed leader, Mr. Levick. Could we have a call?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. This evening, I have a nomination for the position of the principal of Massway Elementary School, Carrie Veish. And Carrie comes to us from some work over in Massachusetts. She started her career as a special ed aide over in Rye, and actually became a teacher for grades one and three in Rye, and also worked in Amesbury, Massachusetts as a primary teacher. And then spent some time as a school adjustment council in Amesbury, Massachusetts. She's also been a college instructor with the task of helping new teachers do lesson planning, model teaching approaches. She was an assistant principal at Newbury, Massachusetts, in elementary school for two years, and is presently, has been a principal over in Hamilton, Massachusetts for five years. So I'd like to invite Carrie to come forward to meet the board. And as I've been doing with my candidates, I've asked three perceptive questions. So that TV audience gets to know you a little bit, and as well as the board. So the first question is to tell us about your career, your accomplishments, and your present interests.
Sure. You give a little background from my educational standpoint, and I have a bachelor's degree and a master's degree in elementary education and leadership. Most recently, I also completed a National Institute for School Leadership program, which really brings home, brings together a cohort of leaders to really delve into best practices, and to analyze systems, and prepare, and really explain and expand upon 21st century skills that we need to know to be able to best prepare our students in the schools. As you mentioned, I currently serve as the principal of the Winthrop School in Hamilton, Massachusetts. It's a small district. We have three elementary schools, a middle and a high school combination. And I think there are many things that I'm proud of in my career. I feel fortunate that I've had a lot of different experiences, from being a teaching assistant, to being a teacher, to being a counselor, to being an assistant principal, and seeing how all those facets really tie together into the principal role. Most recently, some of the things that we've put into place in our schools is really, we've done a lot with curriculum alignment. We've done a lot with providing services for students of special needs, both moderate and severe special needs. And I've worked strongly on developing those programs in my building. So I house those. Those buildings are all housed in our schoolhouse, so.
Thank you. The second question is, what attracts you to this position at Massway? And along with that, what particular strengths do you bring to the school system?
Sure. With that diversity of my background that I've had, I've worked in a variety of different sized schools, from both working in Rye and working in Amesbury. The schools were around 400. As you know, probably Rye is a smaller district, but with lots of towns. In Amesbury, it was a smaller schoolhouse for elementary, but a larger field, a larger middle school, a larger high school, but with still a strong town field. When I went to Newbury, it was a very large school, 650 students. It was difficult for me as an administrator to get to know the children. I prefer to be able to know parents by name, know students by name, and where I'm currently, the feel of the school is very similar to Massway. And I'm very excited to work within the district, to serve the families and community members, and work with teachers further.
Okay. In your position as a principal at Massway Elementary School, what would you do to ensure good communication with parents, the school, and students?
Sure. I think that's one of the essential pieces of the position, because it is so dynamic and so diverse on a daily basis. I've used a variety of different tools, one being a weekly newsletter that we put out to share about curriculum connections, and to share about what's going on in and among the school. You know, as we say, I call it the children's, you know, home during the day. They have ownership of it. So doing newsletters, inviting parents in, really encouraging and fostering that bond between volunteerism in the school and with community members. That's been a big focus, and I think a strength that has really helped, so that people who may not always get into the schools, we invite them in. And I invite them in to come for various events, whether it be a grandparents' day or a grand friend's day, we sometimes call it, that sort of thing. And it really is nice to be able to bridge that gap. I try to keep parents involved in all aspects of it, making sure the good homeschool connection, that communication is ongoing throughout the year, not just sporadically throughout the year.
Thank you. At this point, I just want to explain a little bit what our process. We had an initial search team, about nine people, composed of a school board member, elementary principal, teachers, and the parents. And following our screening process, we invited two finalists to come and meet with the faculty at Massway, as well as the parents. The PTO was kind enough to organize that event. And following the feedback we received from parents and the staff, I sent a visiting team to visit Carrie's school. A visiting team consisted of a parent, teacher, and elementary principal. And from all of that information, I'd also like to mention that Dr. Morse was at Massway the evening that candidates were interviewed by the two groups. Following all of this feedback and the debriefing from the site visit, I spoke with Dr. Morse, and the decision was to bring forward Carrie Veish's name this evening. So at this point, I would like to place a nomination before the board. Carrie Veish is the principal of Massway Elementary School.
Do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Carrie Veish as the principal of Massway.
Moved by Al. Second point, discussion. Could we have a vote, please? Six in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you very much.
Now, we need to move the mic back. And the public can put public comment.
Kenny Rowe here from Durham. Sorry to be such a regular history. But a few things. I see one of the agenda items is accepting the resignation of Andrea Tran. And I just want to say that I really appreciated the work that she was doing in our district as managing food services to try to promote healthier foods, and lunches, and breakfasts at our school. I think it's really imperative that when we move to replace her, that we find someone that shares that value. We all know of the health problems that have arisen from diets of our society. As a physician, seeing that firsthand, I really hope we don't have a return to French toast sticks and fried mozzarella sticks. And I think that the person who gets hired, I think we need to really support, really know that our district's really behind it, and we really be able to let that work go forward. Second point is I had the privilege of attending the graduation this year, and I want to just commend all the people that spoke, the musical performances. I was incredibly stricken by the attachment that the graduating seniors have for the school, have for the teachers, the affection the teachers had for the students, and the way the students really have a bond together. That wasn't part of my high school experience, and I think it really was, it came across very clearly, that spirit, and I think that's something incredibly valuable for our district. And I also want to really thank the people that worked on Project Graduation. I think when Moody and Liz Shea were leaders, but lots of people were involved, and they did an enormous amount of work, and the seniors really enjoyed their trip. The last point, word directed to the board is, I feel that you missed the boat by not restoring that second public comments, and I would really appreciate you put that on an agenda to discuss. I read on a website in the town, one of the recent board members had written about how the meetings are, they're meetings held in public, but they're not public meetings. And I think I heard that reflected at the board as well. But I think what happened last year really demonstrates the importance of those public comments. There are a lot of issues that came up, and there are going to be a lot of issues that come up. Our board is going to face a time of transition with new staffing. And the people who came to speak really voiced a sentiment to the community. And if the board had listened to the public comments when it came to budget, when it came to what we thought about staffing, probably that process of election would have gone in a different direction. Public comments, I think, are so valuable to be listened to, and as a public board, that's, I think, what drives your decisions, is what the public really wants, what their interest is, not one person's particular interest that's on the board, but what the public. So I would hope that you would consider that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tracy Schrader. I am a resident of Durham and also the school nurse at Maharamit. I echo some of what Kenny said in regards to Andrea Tran. I am incredibly sorry to see her go. I think she made some incredible changes, and I just want to thank her. For whatever reason she's resigning, I'm very sorry about it, and I think that she did some really good things. I know she did at Maharamit. She made some wonderful changes, had a lot of vision, and I hope that that carries through with whoever we replace her. But in the meantime, thank you to Andrea Tran.
Thank you.
Dean Rubine, Lee, everybody. Congratulations to Carrie, and Catherine Ford, and Carolyn Eastman. Thanks to Chris Gallo, Phyllis, Danielle, Andrea, and Lee for all your great work. I'll say again, I'd like the second round of public comments restored as well. I think you guys decided not to summarize public correspondence, so I would recommend that you post the correspondence on the Internet. It's public correspondence, and you know, mostly that folder, that notebook seems to function as, I don't know, paperweight for Wendy or something, and hardly anybody ever sees the book. I think it would be much better to put them out there. You could start with just the email, and if you do put the email out there, I would delete the email addresses, so people don't get spam. And my last thing I want to say is, I guess I found out over the last couple of days, there have been these meetings with town selectmen and various community groups of the board members, and sometimes the superintendent. And I guess I'd like to know about them. I mean, just to know that they happen, other than through gossip, and maybe even know what happened if they're public. So if you guys would let us know when you guys are meeting community groups or the town, we're interested. That's all I got.
Thank you. Anybody else? Moving right along to superintendent's actions.
First action is to accept the, regret the resignation of Food Service Director Andrea Tran.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the resignation of Andrea Tran.
What's saying some regrets?
Discussion, I'll say something.
And second by Tom. Discussion, Al?
I was really lucky to get to work with Andrea over at Maharamit this past year. And it was under the wackiest of circumstances. She put on her Carmen Miranda hat and her apron, and it was Mrs. Vegetable, and I dressed up as Captain Balance, and it was incredibly fun. From, you know, handing out some vegetables, it was hard to believe kids would eat, the Brussels sprout, to the baked kale. So it was a lot of fun. I got to see a lot of what Andrea had done, and as Tracy mentioned, she brought about some really great changes to the lunch and food service. So I would hope that as we move forward, we're able to keep and add to those, and I wish her the best of luck.
Other discussion?
I just want to say, I too think Andrea was a real asset to the district. She made some changes that had such a huge impact for families. The one that she did right out of the gate was putting nutritional information about our foods that we're serving. I mean, that was such an important thing for so many families. She did it right away. The menus, you know, much more healthful foods were there, and I thank her. I think she was very, she had good energy, and I wish her all the best, and I hope her legacy can continue for our children.
With Al, and with Megan, and I'm sure with the rest of the board, I wish Andrea
well. She brought a bright light on food, and led us all to understand and believe that you can do more with it, and encourage children to eat food that is not only tasty but good for them. And she did it with a smile, and she did it under dire circumstances sometimes. She had to meet certain delivery standards, which I think we're trying, but she will be missed, and I'd like to thank her for her service.
And?
No, I was impressed talking with her. I think that, you know, I don't know why she resigned, but I think her job is very difficult, because I think there's a kind of a catch 22 trying to bring nutritional food into a group of students who don't want to eat necessarily nutritional food, and especially when the budget, her budget depends on how many kids eat lunch. It puts her in a very difficult situation, kind of fighting with parents, with kids, with other members of the, with the school board for budget, with everybody else. So it's a, you know, I think in the, with the, whoever her replacement is, I think that's got to be factored into trying to find the right person to take on that battle.
Thank you. Any questions? Are we ready to? Could I show hands, please? Six in the affirmative. Motion carries.
I now have a nomination for a math teacher at Oyster River High School. That's Erica Johnson.
Make a motion to accept the nomination for the math teacher at Oyster River High School.
Moved by Ann. Accept the nomination. By Tom. Discussion? Could we have?
I just want to understand, what math classes do we know that she would be teaching? Maybe parents would be interested.
Yes, I believe that could be had right now.
At this point, she's being hired as a replacement to replace the classes that Brian O'Connell was teaching. There are a couple of geometry classes and a computer integrated math class. However, one of the appeals to her as a candidate is her wide-ranging abilities to teach everything from our general math all the way up to AP stats and calculus, and so she actually brings some real flexibility to department. So we may do some tweaking once she's here, in terms of what her responsibilities end up being.
Thank you. Thank you. Are we ready? Good. Let's see, show of hands, please. Six in the affirmative. Motion carries.
And also have a long-term substitute for art, that's Kathleen Johnson.
I'd like to make a motion to accept Kathleen Johnson as the high school art long-term substitute.
Moved by Al. Seconded by Megan. Discussion? Seeing none. Could we have a show of hands, please? Six in the affirmative. Motion carries. Anything else?
No, you want to second.
Board's actions. Second read, adoption of policy BEAB.
I'd like to make a motion to accept policy BEAB.
Second read.
Second read.
Is the second?
Sure.
Ed? Discussion?
Yeah, I don't want to get totally wordsmithy, and I was, you know, brought up by a physician just like a pager, and it appears like pagers are on their way out. But in the policy, it says that they'll refrain from using electronic communications during the board meeting. And I'm just wondering if you put down, you know, add to that, except in case of emergency.
I don't think, I don't.
Is it, I mean, I'm.
Megan? Yeah. I can't, I have it pretty much memorized, but I think there's some verbiage in here that, you know, it's stipulating what types of communication.
Yeah.
So I think that would be redundant. I don't think you need it. You know, I think it's clear in my mind that if you have a family emergency, or you need some type of, you know, that's an extenuating circumstance, and that's to be respected. And if you have to leave the room to do a personal, take care of a personal matter, we would, you know, respect that.
Yes, sir. An amendment to the motion.
Yeah, I would like to actually amend it to say that, because it really, when you go back further, it just says the boards won't use it to communicate with other members of the public regarding school board business, or agenda, or other board matters that are discussed publicly during the meeting. It doesn't really specifically say, I mean, if your pager goes off, and there's some emergency, it doesn't really say that. And I can't really see any harm to saying like, you know, you can get up. So the only thing I would like to add is that the Oyster River Community School Board members were refrain from using electronic communications, communication devices during the board meeting unless, unless there's an emergency.
What's an emergency?
Oh, okay.
See, my point.
Yeah, I know what you're saying. I know what you're saying, like a family emergency, or?
The shorts.
That was the motion. Amendment to the motion? Do we have? Just second.
I can't second it, but why don't we get a second first, and I'll talk about it.
I'll second it.
Okay. I think even though emergency is ambiguous, it would be a lot better to have in here and leave that open to interpretation, rather than leaving whether you can use your cellphone in an emergency open to interpretation. I think like texting during a meeting obviously isn't an emergency, but if your sister is going into labor, that's an emergency.
Al, can you give me the wording again?
Okay, so I said the Oyster River Community, the Oyster River Cooperative School Board members will refrain from using electronic communications devices during board meetings.
Accept.
Except in case of emergency.
So the amendment is to add, in case of emergency.
So all you're adding is in case of emergency?
Mm-hmm.
Accept.
Except in case of emergency.
Got it.
What did I say? Okay, so we have an amendment to the motion.
Discussion?
Yes.
The New Hampshire School Board Association provides this policy as an optional policy, not a recommended, not a necessary. And in that light, I consider it excessive, and I won't vote for it.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I do think Ann has a point on this. We do kind of live in the digital age, but at the same time, our responsibility is to be here on the school board. That being said, sometimes I'll make Twitter posts asking for any comments, asking people to tweet at me with a hashtag, whatever, Oyster River School Board, and no one ever does, but this policy will prevent me from doing it at all. And that takes away an element of communication between me and the people that I was elected to represent. But at the same time, there's no excuse texting during meetings.
I think that's the point, that the public has a right to know what's happening, and what conversations take place at this meeting. Ed?
No, I was going to say, that's the point. I mean, you want to keep this meeting as public as possible.
The intention of the right-to-know law is to make known to the public work that is done on a board, between board members, of greater than three. And so the concern that this imposes upon, or violates, right-to-know is inaccurate. You are having a conversation with a member of the community is not, does not violate right-to-know, no matter when it happens. Because I'm not making law, I'm not impacting the district, I'm not voting on issues. So I think it's, it's an exaggeration and unrealistic interpretation of what the right-to-know law is for. And I think that John's point was that he may have people that can't reach him any other time. They may, I can't speak to the people who might be contacting him. However, I can speak to that if the concern is that it would cause a violation of right-to-know, it doesn't.
I guess some generation that thinks it's just rude. Any further discussion? We're voting on the amendment. Those in favor of adding in, except for emergency? All those in favor? All those opposed?
I like brevity.
Four in favor, two in opposition. Now we have to vote on the motion as amended, which is the policy with those words added. Any discussion? Hearing none. Could we have a show of hands, please? And those in opposition? And five in favor, one in opposition. Motion carries. District reports.
The first report we have will be from Corey Parker, athletic director, spring update, and.
No. How about student senate report?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. John, if you have it.
Student senate report. We're not doing much. We just started a new session. We have a new senate advisor, Derek Cangello, who is a social studies teacher here at the high school. I think he's going to do a great job. We're starting to think about what we're going to be doing over the next year. I can't tell you what it is yet, because we don't know either. We're still waiting on the freshmen to have their class elections, which will be taking place hopefully within the first few weeks of school, because we've got a lot to do. Class color day coming up. And perhaps we'll be making some changes to spirit week at the high school, but that's to be determined as well.
Thank you. Now we can move on.
Board members, community members, good evening. This spring was a unique spring, to the point that we actually transitioned in four new head varsity coaches for our varsity team. So it was an interesting spring to have new faces, new ideas come forward, and I think a lot of the kids were very receptive to it. A lot of the programs started off in running in January, as opposed to mid-February, March, and the kids really thrived on that, and the extra conditioning, extra work that they had during the season. Highlighted with the girls' across team, as a team qualifying for the playoffs for the second straight year in Division Two, excuse me, Division Three in their case, in girls' across, only a top eight make it as of 23 teams. across, only a top eight make it as of 23 teams, so it's a, it's a great feat to actually make the playoffs. Unfortunately, we ran into a 16-0 Wyndham team that eventually won the state championship, so, but the girls fought hard at Wyndham and played really well. Individually, we had some outstanding success this year, senior Riley Maynard in the girls' across team was voted Division Three Player of the Year for the defensive position, which is voted on by all the other coaches across the state, so a tremendous honor recognized by the other coaches across the state, and we had two state champions in track and field in the Division Two, being Ethan Dreskett in the 100-meter and Natalie Belinski in the 100-meter and the 200-meter races. Both seniors, unfortunately, but outstanding careers that started many moons ago and worked hard through the offseason, really dedicated to fitness and strength building, that started in the indoor season with wins in the sprint, track and field state championships, carried over to the steamy Milford Track and Field day that it was a few weeks ago. So wishing them both a lot in the future. Ethan's going to be running at Colby College and Natalie will be running at University of New Hampshire next year. Natalie was actually a nominee, nomination for the Gatorade Female Athlete of the Year that she unfortunately did not win, but was a nominee, the top six were nominated for that, so we almost had an unbelievable opportunity to have back-to-back Gatorade Athletes of the Year with Danielle Walzak last year for women's basketball, but the nomination nonetheless is a tremendous accomplishment. Both those athletes, not surprisingly, were voted Oyster River Athletes of the Year with Ethan and Natalie for their accomplishments, both soccer and track and field for Ethan, and then field hockey and track and field for Natalie. To recap our season, that was given to you guys in the slides, just to kind of look at our numbers, we had 247 student athletes, 24 coaches in the spring, all-state players or state qualifiers, the all-state player pre-says obviously voted on first team, second team, or honorable mention across the state, and then a qualifier for the state tournament would be a time in the 100-meter race where you're the top 24 to advance, so that we had 29 positions that were either nominations of individuals or four-by-four relay or something of the magnitude that made it to the state level, so that tremendous number when you consider the amount of student athletes that we had participating, and as I mentioned earlier, the two state champions in Ethan and Natalie as state champs. The total year recap, just to quickly summarize, in the fall we had 220 athletes, in the winter we had 276, and then as I mentioned, in the spring we had 247. That's a total of 743 student athletes throughout the year. We had 73 paid and volunteer coaches, which roughly gives you a 10, 10 to 1 ratio for our sports team, that's phenomenal, to be able to have coaches dedicating themselves for instruction at such a low clip when you consider a lot of the sports teams. That number is extremely successful, I actually sent it to a bunch of ADs today, just out of curiosity, to see where that stands, because I immediately compared it to a classroom setting, obviously, and 10 to 1 would be, was really successful for our kids. Of the 743, we then cross-checked off how many actual students were participating within a sport, taking out multi-sport athletes, and that number was 449, which is roughly 67% of our entire student body, which in my eight years of doing this, I've never reached a number above 59%. So it truly speaks volumes about the involvement that our student body has here in getting involved with an athletic activity. Of the 743 total athletic participants, if you will, 49% of those were multi-sport athletes, so, which again speaks unbelievably about kids being able to balance time management skills with classroom and academic excellence that they're striving for, and certainly being able to balance multiple seasons, especially given the commitment one has to have to sports these days, is truly a phenomenal number, and I would put that up against anyone in the state to compare with your student body and involvement, and Todd and I were talking a few minutes ago, that doesn't include all the kids involved with the drama or the robotics club or equestrian team, which was a team growing this year, equestrian club I should say. So I would be putting us up, probably guesstimating around 90% of our students are participating in some extracurricular activity, and I'd love to get that data over the summer and present it to you guys in the fall, because I think that's such a big piece of the overall academic education growth of a student and being able to be in outside organizations. That wraps up the spring portion. Do you guys have any questions towards the slides that were sent over?
I have some questions, but not pertaining to the slides.
Oh, that's fine.
Okay. Last time you presented, you, you talked about a leadership initiative.
Yes, thank you very much for mentioning that, and I had it small font in my notes.
Okay.
It wasn't a spring sport. Yeah, we actually ended up concluding the first class of it, and we tried to do a graduation of ceremony. Brief summary, a couple of coaches and I got together right after the fall season and talked about what it means to be a leader, and I think a lot of coaches now just give the captain title to someone or expect leaders, but they really don't follow it up with what that expectation is. And so we had 16 individuals that are fall student athletes apply. They had to write an essay, they had to explain why they wanted to be a part of this, and we did take everyone who did apply, but they certainly had to make the effort, we didn't call them, ask them to be a part of it. We ended up meeting five different times over a two-month period, having guest speakers, Marty Scaronno came in and Coach Mack from the University of New Hampshire football team came in and spoke to the kids, and we tried to identify the core components of what a leader is, the values, the perseverance, every, the pressures that are coming along with that, and those speakers were wonderful about bringing the college athlete mindset in, but a lot of the core principles are the same as to what it means to be a leader. The kids were given homework assignments each time to identify their definition of leadership and then present to the group at the following meeting. Then most recently, at the conclusion of our fifth session, each of the students had to come in and present their motivational inspirational quote and tie it to how they're going to apply it to this upcoming season and what we learned in the leadership, and the final piece was they all had a project. We put them in teams within their sports, so we had a handful of, from each sport, and they were to, to a project, some were hands-on with working with our eighth graders, having some friendly soccer get-togethers to kind of just bring them up to speed about what it means to be a ninth grader and kind of maybe take away that apprehension that a lot of the students that took part in this expressed to us. So it was a tremendous success. Last evening, we actually met myself and Lyndon Nelson, who helps Spirit, who's our girls' varsity head soccer coach, we met with the fall coaches and brought them up to speed and showed them the curriculum that we presented and some of the concerns that the student body had about the communication channels, when things aren't going the way they are, how do you talk to a, other player on the team, and really utilizing that captain being an extension of the coaching staff, and, and all the coaches were wonderfully receptive to it, excited for it. I know a lot of them are reaching out to some of the potential leaders of the team to rewrite their team code of conduct, if you will, and how it applies to their team so that the kids have a say in how the program goes, and I'm excited to do it again in the fall. Like I said, in the fall, we're going to open it up to winter student athletes and have the same kind of course to go through the fall for winter, and then in the winter for spring athletes, with the hope of really kind of getting to the point where if you aspire to be a captain, maybe your junior, senior year, you're applying to do this as a sophomore, to really kind of build the leadership education to the student athlete. So thank you very much for mentioning that.
I have another question as well, and this is more for my own edification than others who may not know. I want to understand what type of academic standing do student athletes need to maintain in order to play sports? And I think, you know, coming to that point, it's an important question, because I know for some students, they may be struggling in a certain subject matter, may not get a good grade, but, you know, yet the sport, you know, playing in athletics, being on a team is what really engages them, and so you don't want to, there's a fine line and a balancing act there, and I just want to understand what our policy is and get any thoughts you have about that.
Yeah, our policy is standard with the state's requirements, which is you must pass four credited courses and you cannot fail more than one class. To be brutally honest, I think it's a little lower than where I'd like it to be, and I've got some ideas in working with our athletic council, not so much changing that initial eligibility to be a part of a team, but to monitor that a heck of a lot closer for someone who may be closer to barely being eligible as opposed to players who are being eligible, and that process pretty much turns into a weekly grade check, and it's been successful in the past where, where I've implemented, we've called it the Academic Intervention Program, AIP, and essentially I had set a C-minus GPA, so that if you were eligible to make a team, at that point, when I'm checking physicals, I'm also checking a current GPA of the previous quarter, and if you fell under that average, you were still eligible, we still encourage you and didn't push you away from the team, but your grading was monitored every Friday, and what ended up happening from it is if a student started slipping off, let's say they make the team on Monday, they don't turn any weekend for two weeks, now they've got a 15 average, it eliminates that, and unfortunately, those pitfalls do exist in student athletes at the high school level. So what it in turn would, it would put these individuals on a academic intervention program that the coach and the parent have to sign off on, to the point where every Friday we check their grades, and if they had, if they're showing any Fs, they have one week to get out of that range, and usually typically it's missing assignments, bottom line. So it's, it's really kind of challenging them to reassess their time management skills, and in most cases, in, within that week, they're challenged and they rise to the highest and get those turned in assignments in some cases, and we would certainly outline this to that if they fell behind again for that second week, they would be required to attend help sessions every day, attend homework den, then go to a certain practice, and certainly if the practice was going during homework den, they would miss their practice. I'm a big proponent on what you do between seven and three matters more than what you do from three to seven, and, and I think that's the best way of kind of weekly policing it, so that the students learn those time management and study habits two weeks into the quarter as opposed to the last three days of the quarter scrambling to turn in a bunch of assignments.
So is that something that you're planning on implementing?
Yes, yeah, I'm, I'm putting it all in documentation form next, next week is my hope, and to present that to you guys in July or August, or at least go through the proper channels so that it's approved to the Athletic Handbook and certainly the School Handbook.
Sounds great, thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome. At this time, oh, I'm sorry, at this time I'd like to bring up Todd Allen, as I know we've got some information.
Before we go to that, I'd just like to comment, I've had the chance to observe Corey a number of times this year, and just a remarkable job he's done since he arrived, and I think both Todd and I will attest that he brought a great deal of energy, and we're particularly impressed with his capacity to get to know the students and to fit very well into the Oyster River school system, his communication with parents, students, and, and putting the, a lot of data and information together, and, and then also emphasizing the academic portion of, of an athlete, and so for that, truly grateful for the work you've done this year.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would, I would echo that, it has been, you know, probably one of the smartest things I've done this year is to have brought, brought Corey in.
Yay.
It is clear that, you know, he's, he's setting a lot of these statistics in our successes of our students, but it's, it's system-wide, it's not like there's one sport in particular that's doing better than others, he, he really is looking at the whole picture and really trying to make sure that the academic and the athletic really go together, and I think for a lot of kids, you know, obviously, you know, there are kids who are not that excited to be in school, and athletics is the motivator that gets them there, and so you don't want to pull the rug out from under those kids and take that away from them, but by the same token, we have to have standards, and I, I do like the proactive way he's approached a number of the problems, particularly trying, I mean, even though we haven't officially adopted this academic improvement plan model, that, that has been the, philosophically the way Corey has approached things all year. He fortunately had a lot of experience with Power School before he came here, so he was very, he was up to speed with it more so than any of us were, so he already knew all its capacities and was able to use it right away, so I do say, I appreciate very much what he's done. I'm going to try to keep this, this next piece, you know, relatively short, I just kind of, I wanted to touch base with you about, give you a little historical background of the athletic field fundraising effort, because it's something that I've been involved in for a very long time, I'm going to condense into about three minutes, 15 years' worth of athletic fields history, and then I kind of tell you what Corey and I have been kind of looking at and hoping to accomplish. First of all, just to take you back to when the, when the high school renovation project was first proposed back in the late 90s, the first proposal included a fairly significant athletic field upgrade. However, due to costs and so forth, there are a number of things that were trimmed out of that proposal to get it down to a level where eventually the voters approved it. The two things that were significantly reduced were athletic facilities upgrades and they originally eliminated the auditorium as part of the proposal, and then it got put back in as a much smaller auditorium, but one of the thing, the cost of that was that in the end, when we built this very nice, you know, state-of-the-art high school, no, no effort was put into upgrading the athletic fields, and anybody who's, who's been involved in Oyster River Athletics and talks with coaches from other, other schools, you know, our, our fields are known as being not that great. Our, our fields are known as being places where, you know, water retains fairly easily, you know, rocks have a tendency to be there, unevenness, you know, all of those things. Our facilities guys do a great job with it, but the bottom line is, we, we, our, our facilities are not adequate for what we're trying to do. So at that time, there was a group of people, which I was involved in, and was the Friends of Oyster River Track, we were most passionate, as its name gives, gives it away, we were most passionate about getting a track built for the Oyster River School District, and so in 1998, we formed an organization and came to the school board at that time to get the commitment from the board at that time that if we raise the money, will you build it? And we were given the promise that yes, yes, if you get us the money, we will build this track. Well, it took us about seven years, but we did raise 200 and, 277,000 dollars roughly in two, the two track fund district support and track fund private donations, so it's 277,000 dollars sitting there collecting about 0.03% interest, waiting for some action to be taken. About three years ago, the board at that time recognized that the reason why we were not able to move forward on the track project was that it wasn't just a track issue, and I totally am on board with that, it absolutely is an athletic fields issue. In order to build a track, you have to disrupt the soccer field, you probably have to reconfigure the baseball field, there's, there's a number of related impacts. Back when we first started the effort, there was also the related question of, well, in order to do that, you need to look for off-site athletic fields, because there aren't enough of them, and for the time that you're doing the construction, our kids need to go somewhere. Well, fortunately, in the last 10 years, our surrounding communities have done an awful lot of work to generate some very nice fields in our surrounding communities. Madbury's updated their fields, there's Tibbetts Field as well as the Madbury Field, Lee has got Little River Park, and then obviously Town Durham has, you know, Woodridge Field, and then obviously we have our, our school athletic fields. So clearly, there, there are off-site locations, so now we can once again turn our attention back to Oyster River facilities. As I started to say, three years ago, the school board created a, an expendable trust fund to, for private donations for the purpose of athletic facilities upgrades. In order to create the fund, they needed to have somebody make the initial donation, and myself and John Parsons each contributed a dollar to it. I checked with Sue Haswell, spend three years, there's $2 in that account.
Apple stock with them?
Collect the interest.
Probably 203, I apologize.
It wasn't me.
This, no, different John Parsons, yes, the retired science teacher John Parsons. Although I'm sure if I asked you to give me a dollar, would you? So anyway, so here we are, it's 2012, it's been 14 years of, of efforts to raise funds. One of the things, you know, we were just talking about what an exceptional athletic director Corey is, but one of the things that certainly impressed the interviewing committee was his experience in field development planning and work in the Cincinnati area raising money to, to do projects just like this. And so what we're coming to you today to do is to talk to you about restarting the fundraising efforts to, to make this happen. We recognize that the, the, the cost of this project, I'm not going to lie to you, is, is probably going to be multiple millions of dollars in the end. Five years ago, there was a bond proposed, some of you might remember it, it was a 2.3 million dollar bond to, to do this project, it was defeated at the polls. Clearly, I think the, the view people have is that was too much money at that time. Clearly, our intent is to try to generate as much private funding as we possibly can, but I do think it's important that if any of you have ever been involved in fundraising efforts, you realize to have an infinite timetable where someday in the future you want to do something, it's awfully hard to get people to commit a significant amount of money, and we would really like to look at. And we would really like to look at a fairly aggressive timetable so that when we go and ask people, assuming that you're okay with us getting this process started, that we would be ready to take an action fairly soon. Cory and I kind of batted around, you know, how rapidly do we think something might happen? Well, you know, in a perfect world, we'd like to think by 2015, we might be actually able to be taking, you know, active steps to build either turf field, a track, all of those things. Paul, we would need from you, first of all, is the green light that you feel that this is a worthwhile endeavor for us to put our time into because it isn't something that's going to be, it's not going to happen immediately, but we need to know that we have your support. And the other piece is just your recognition and awareness that it's very unlikely that we're going to be able to 100% raise the money to build the facility. And obviously, there would be, once a facility is built, there would be maintenance costs associated with that. And so we're kind of, we want to get a read from you as to whether or not you would be supportive of us starting this. We're very excited about this idea. Cory, as our, in fact, you want to talk a little bit about where your thoughts are?
Yeah, I've got some experience. We've had to do this at two separate school boards similar to this, where we put a presentation together and kind of going off what Todd said, we'd love to kind of get green lighted to really get the ball rolling. I think a big piece, and I wasn't here for the tremendous effort that Fort put together in raising that funds, was from everything I gathered, that was a track specific kind of fundraiser information out there. And our approach is if this is a track slash turf field, this affects every single team in our, in our high school, in our middle school, and certainly with ORYA and the community. And there's a lot of statistical information that we'd love to put together and show whether the cost of a grass field and maintaining that on a yearly basis over a 10-year length times, the money we put into UNH and their rental facilities, plus the revenue generation portion of this where you can bring in significant rentals on a yearly basis to it. So I'm excited to present this. I know I've spoke with some individuals at ORYA. Certainly, some of our coaches are thrilled on the concept, but it's at the point where we'd love to kind of hit the ground running with it, certainly with your blessing.
Basically, the project we would be looking to try to create, and actually, the designs have already been done. So in fact, Sue, and we can pick them out and we can make those available to you in the event you want us to go forward with this. The project would involve an all-weather track, turf field inside it, reconfiguration of the baseball diamond on the site that we have. We wouldn't be losing fields, but we would, making a major upgrade. For those who aren't familiar with turf fields, they really do, having one turf field is like having three rectangular fields in terms of the amount of use that they can take. And I was having lunch with Bill Sullivan, who was one of our former lacrosse coaches, and we were discussing the damage that lacrosse does to a sod field and realizing that, you know, the amount of time and money that we put into keeping our fields going so that we can have a very successful lacrosse program, that kind of stuff would be saved by having a turf field. And obviously, having a turf field then opens the possibility of using it as a revenue generating source as well. So there's a lot of, as Cory alluded to, there's a lot of information we would like to pull together and share with you. At this point, we're really just looking for a green light to saying, you know, we would like you to go ahead with that if you feel this is something that's worthy of our time.
I have a, as anyone who's like has kids on ORYA can point out, it's like, once it rains, everything closes. And I guess you guys are probably, the drainage must be just as bad on your field. When you look at this, have you looked at, I don't even know what the cost is like, you know, improving drainage versus the field turf? I know like, I look at Envy at those new field turf ones at the back of UNH, and those are awesome. It'd be great to have it. But have you thought through like, when we go through with this, two options maybe just cost-wise?
Again, I keep referring to this past proposal, but that's certainly the image that I have in my mind. When we had the engineers from Appledore who designed, who laid out this proposal, it does involve an awful lot of field work.
Yeah.
To install drainage and all of those things. And that is one of the gains you have by doing this, that you don't just have a turf field, you also improve the drainage all over your field.
Yeah.
So that even the baseball field, which is not going to be a turf field, would still benefit from better drainage. So yes, that would be a big part of it. And that would be, I mean, certainly if you think to, like, when spring seasons begin in March, our kids typically can't get on our, this year was different because we had summer in February this year. But in a normal winter, our kids can't get on the field until probably the first or second week of April if they're lucky, because we're waiting for it to dry. If you notice at UNH where they have turf fields, they snow blow the thing off and there are people using it all winter long. So it's something that allows for a lot more use and it's, and it is partly a drainage issue, yeah?
Yeah, the drainage and simply just the usage. Whether it be eight hours of PE every day, even in the best conditions, it's only a matter of time till you lose that bud, you lose that seed, and there's no more growth in the grass. And the turf eliminates that completely, to the point where you can literally park cars on it if you wanted to all day long. The biggest downfall to certainly the facilities at UNH is that backfield you were referring to is $225 an hour. So as much as I would love to move our teams there for practices.
We could move here, right? We could rent ours out for like that summer soccer camp and all that stuff. We could bring that back in-house and use that as a revenue gainer, right?
Yeah, certainly the community aspect and not so much, not even just the revenue generator, but being able to have a track for community members to show up and use and not have the intimidation of parking in a lot and having to be in shape to get to the track and then run the track. And certainly, the safety part of it, because the ground never freezes on a turf field. So you never have to worry about a kid falling down, hitting their head, especially in October here. You know, that was a big piece that you see with a lot of turf fields. As far as the state goes, when you look at state championships, they've moved almost all of them to a turf facility because it's a consistent play. The injury risk is so minimal, whereas a grass field limits yourself to whatever the conditions are.
Just to clarify, which field will we be making into AstroTurf?
AstroTurf is an outdated term. Field turf, yeah. AstroTurf is back in the 70s when, you're, but, okay. Yeah. You know, a lot of us, and I do think it's, you know, a lot of us, particularly of my generation, you may have grown up watching National League Baseball when the Astrodome opened up and AstroTurf became the image of like, this almost like cement-like green thing. That is not what we would be looking, I mean, if you haven't been to one of the more modern field turfs, it is, it's very cushioning. It's like, it's like playing on a carpet. It really is very, very protective. So I apologize, I'm the only kid around me.
Which field are you going to?
But the field we're looking at would be the varsity soccer field. And the, again, the design would involve some groundwork around there to extend the field a little bit down towards the wooded area to fit it in, but it would get us a six-lane track with a turf field inside of it.
Megan?
Could the turf field be used for football?
It certainly opens, it opens.
I know there's people who want to know that.
Sure, yeah. And that's, to be candid, they've asked me those kind of questions. And having a turf field extends the life of it to the point where football could certainly be something we could have more serious conversations about as far as growth of that. Because like I said, I would say football is the worst as far as tearing up fields. It's worse than lacrosse in my experiences. So certainly not having that turf kind of warrants those kind of type of questions of where to play this game.
Thank you.
I'd just like to see the sequence. If we would give you the go-ahead to raise money, would it be similar to with the library project where you raise a certain threshold, then you ask for, say, Warren article for the additional amounts? Or does that depend upon how much you raise? Or how, just how would you see this playing out?
Well, what we would start by doing is we have to go back and relook at the plan that was made five years ago to first of all, determine if that plan is still feasible. So we would have a committee that would gather to kind of review that, look at it in terms of phases. Our goal would be that we would be able to come to you at some point in the next couple of months to outline to you how we see it most realistically playing out. It may not be realistic to think that in 2015, we're going to be ready to go with everything, but we would like to be ready to go with some major upgrade, whether it be putting down a turf field as a starting point. But right now, we haven't got all of those details lined up yet. It certainly is within the range of possibilities that we could think of it as three distinct phases, as long as, as we're doing each phase, we're keeping in mind that we want to keep open the possibility of the next phase. So for example, putting a turf field down, as long as when you're putting the turf field down, you're anticipating where the track is going to go and leaving a footprint for the track. Putting in a, the track and the turf field, but at the same time laying the wiring and so forth, so in the event that you're ready to put lights up, you can put lights up. You know, thinking in terms of how are we going to configure the baseball field and kind of laying that down. But at this point, you know, I think we're going to look at it in terms of phases, but right now, we're not ready to say exactly what those phases might be. But yes, our hope would be that we would establish a reasonable goal. We would come back to you and say, here's our, here's the goal that we've established. You know, I could pick a number right now, but I'm not ready to say what that number might be.
So I could clarify, what Todd is just asking tonight is not really a motion. He just wants to know if the sentiment is positive for them to do the work, to come back with a proposal for you to adopt.
I would say yes.
Yeah, it's great, it's a great idea. It really is.
I'd take it great to get this guy.
You know, I was just going to say, because you've given two presentations on sports like, since I've been here, and in both of them, the number of kids participating in athletics has been the largest it ever has been. And so, and the other thing that struck me that we, of course, couldn't do it with the spring because it, we haven't got the gray sun, but the kids that were doing those winter sports, there was a really high percentage of kids that were honor students that were also taking those winter sports. And if we're going to try to keep that kind of level of participation, we just have to upgrade our facilities. So I think it's a great idea.
And just as a lifelong track guy, I just want to throw in a couple of things about track because that's, that has been my passion throughout my coaching life. We have over 100 kids running track at the middle school. We have 60-plus here at the high, 67 here at the high school. That's 160 to 70 kids every spring who are doing track, and they've been doing it dedicated, knocking themselves out, winning state titles, you know, going to the New England's, all without having had a facility for the entire history of our school district. So it's something that I think our kids need.
And you're forgetting the little kids, that ORYA has a track program.
There's another, probably another 100 in the ORYA program. And they, and yeah, and I think lost in all that, as Cory alluded to, is UNH has been very generous with regards to helping work with us to make field, but I think it's, I just, people need to know that it's not free. We do pay, they give us a discount as a hometown town school, but we are paying significant amounts of money every year for the, for the right to use those fields. And I just think it's important that people understand that.
Sounds like it's unanimous.
Fantastic. Awesome. Thank you. We'll be back here within a couple of months with a more concrete proposal of where we're planning to take this. Okay.
Great. Thank you. Okay. For CSD facilities report?
Good evening. So a couple of weeks back, Lee had asked me to summarize my first few months here in the district. And tonight, I wanted to start off by saying thanks for the warm welcome, and I really appreciate everything you've done, and you'll be missed by everyone. Some key talking points for tonight, we're going to, I think it's important that we not only look at the facilities as, you know, much a cost, but, you know, the people that make everything happen. So we're going to briefly discuss meeting the team and get to know them. We'll go over some observations since my arrival, we'll put the rest of the AEC report, and the high school structural audit follow-up, short and long-term capital improvements, summer plans, custodial grounds and maintenance, summer cleaning, which is already underway. If you want to go up to the third floor, you can see some good work, it's already being done with our new techniques. We're going to get into the second shift supervisor that Airmark is providing the district, more energy reduction opportunities. We'll go water and air, life safety systems, the basics of facilities, corrective and preventative maintenance, safety training, sustainability committee, and some feedback and then some Q and A. So here's the high school gang, all experienced professionals in their past jobs. We have a lot of Army veterans and extended years of service, you know, upwards of 20 years of service throughout the custodial at the high school, and they do great work for us. The middle school staff led by Garth Mitchell there, doing a good job on an old school. And there's a lot of challenges over there. We got a training session over there on Monday, and if you want to go by and look at the cafeteria, they really came out great. Paul Byron leads the way over at the Mohermit School, 12 years of service as lead, two as the lead, I'm sorry, with Paul and Mike transferring from Mastway to Mohermit daily. And there's Dave Morn, 12 years of service. Karen and Mike Landry, do a great job over there. Maintenance staff, which is two individuals, Daryl and Richard. Richard's been there for 24 years, one of our longest tenured people, but they do preventative, corrective, maintenance for us on a daily basis. Here's Mike and Ken. They are our grounds people at all four schools and the service building in SAU. We get all the work done with two individuals. You see Ken over there helping the ADA community get to graduation. Rich Verville is our supervisor on the day shift, 23 years of service, 18 as a supervisor. And you can answer any question you know about this facility, he's been here for a while now, so. Very happy with the work Rich does for me and everybody. Deb Pullen, 15 years as facilities secretary. She's the centralized front for facilities. Everything funnels through her, and she does a great job communicating to the district, the community in regards to booking spaces, making sure they file all the appropriate paperwork and insurance and everything like that. She's a pleasure to have and to work with every day. Some initial observations, accountability and follow-up. I think that these are, you know, attention to detail. A lot of times, these are just words that are used, but, you know, from my training, they're essential. You know, following up, closing the loop, not only with the people that you're doing the work with, but, you know, with your boss and whoever your supervisor is. I feel it's very important. Detail orientation, you know, when you go out and do a job, you know, you don't just do 90% of it because you want to get to something else. You finish it and you're held accountable for it. And I tried to instill that, and I think the guys have responded well. The need for a licensed trade, we've addressed that, and I'll get into that a little later. Second shift supervision, communication, regular meetings with senior leadership. I've been meeting with the principals weekly, bi-weekly, and, you know, we don't like shades of gray. We like to, we don't like to leave stones unturned, so we meet regularly to help avoid those things. And managing expectations, a lot of times, there's been frustration, well, you know, I put in a work order, I seen somebody over there. Well, bring that higher level of communication, you know, yes, I'm on-site, this is what I did today. I might be leaving, but, you know, I have to come back, the project's not done. So it's, managing expectations is key in any business, and I think we strive to do that. And then the PM system, we are working with Siemens to not only monitor the PMs they're doing here at the high school, but, you know, to mirror that in our maintenance management system so we can build asset history and be able to report on it. And the AEC report, we have the automation and controls with the Siemens three-year contract that we spoke to, I won't get too far into that. The maintenance supervisor, Rich Verville, attended class over the last month to better understand those systems. And they will be, July 1st is the expected completion date, and we're still on course there. Monitoring and safeguards are part of the training that Rich received. And, you know, the energy reduction verification over the next year will also allow us to receive final rebates, you know, once the savings that they proposed are, you know, visible. The roof work, water ponding, pitch issues will be corrected as part of a five-year capital plan that I put together. Pitch, you know, you get the ponding, whether it's due to a drain or the fact that it wasn't pitched correctly to begin with. pitched correctly to begin with, we're going to deal with those as part of our five-year plan. Leaks are being patched where they are needed. We've been on all the roofs, and some are covered by warranty, some aren't. I have maps of all the schools and what percentages have and have been under warranty and which aren't, and we address them on an as-needed basis. We've done some cleaning of our roof drains. You know, we've seen loose hose clamps in the A E C report, and, you know, maybe not a thorough 100% P M-ing of our equipment on those roofs, and we are striving towards that, you know, on a regular basis. We're also going to look into some skylight and ladders for our roof access, some safety recommendations that were made. We're looking into getting pricing on those, and we could tie it into the summer plan, and we're going to see, based on the pricing and the money we have, whether we can get that done. And we internally went around and rechecked all the units, filters, belts, vacuumed inside. We checked all door seals, adjusted and repaired them. High school seals on windows and dining room hallway were repaired. All roof drains on all buildings were cleaned. Electrical conduit hanging from the string, everyone saw that picture, has been removed and anchored correctly, so. And we checked all schools with suspended ceilings to ensure safety. The structural audit that we had done by Rich Roberts' group, you know, we, there was a lot of interest in that, but, you know, I met with him a couple of times, and he assured me the high school roof is structurally sound. Leaks have been reduced over the past year by 90%. Todd can attest to that. We, you know, we might have a couple in one or two areas, but, you know, we think we found that they have a single source, and that we've, you know, we've dealt with them as they've come up, and I think the auditorium was an example where we had a three-day show in there a couple of weeks ago, and it was raining heavily, and we didn't have water inside, so that was great. Snow loads on those roofs with the renovations, we're looking at a 20-inch allowance in 99% of the spaces. There's some areas where the third-floor roof meets the second, and it's susceptible to drifts, you know, if you get drifts in that area, but that's something we would monitor and make sure, you know, we shoveled off and took care of. And there were some DX units that were, had susceptible, people questioning the installation, and we were assured, and I agree that it's consistent with industry standards, but there were some repairs that needed to be made to a couple of them. Big-ticket items, I tried to get, you know, in the short time I've been here, I've noticed that there's some certain things that we should, you know, plan for, outlook for five years or so, and, you know, roofs are one of them. And I've gotten with a couple vendors and priced out some work based on what's been done and what hasn't been done, and these are some of the areas that need to be done in all four schools here. We can go through them one by one, but I think you can see that there's a five-year plan there for, based on not only the condition of the roof, but the age of it, and, you know, $800,000 is what we're looking at over the next five years to keep our assets, you know, dry and keep us where we need to be as far as roofs go. But, you know, I'll be glad to go into more detail with anybody who wants to, if you want to call me or email me. I'll get back to you.
What about the S A U office? Is that, any other buildings besides these?
That, well, the service building is in great condition. The S A U building, I have made recommendations for, A, the stucco insulation around the foundation has been compromised, and we have to deal with that, but we also have to deal with the roof, due to the restrictions on trimming around those wetland areas, the roof is not really in good condition. There's no leaks, but it just looks horrible, and I don't like looking at it. So I want to, I propose putting the same black roof and shingled vinyl siding that the service building has. If you go over and look at the service building, at the peak, it's got that shingled vinyl that looks really nice, but, you know, I don't know, we have to evaluate how long we're going to hold on to that building and then do a cost analysis after that point.
If you could just elaborate a little bit on checking all the schools with suspended ceilings to ensure safety?
Yep.
What that means?
Like a drop ceiling. If you go up in the ceiling, you can see the braces that penetrate the insulation above, and, you know, you go in there and check to see that nothing's been compromised, you know, you had a contractor in there changing out light fixtures, or leaks that had happened in the past. So you go in there and you physically inspect those, and-
So it's not just the structure of the suspended ceiling, it's what it's covering?
Yes, exactly.
Thank you.
Another one, a big-ticket item that I thought was worth diving into in this short time was paving. It's a problem throughout the district, and I think the public needs to know about it. And the number-one thing to lengthen the life of your pavement is crack sealing. So what I've done is I've divided up some projects that I need to, think need to happen with crack sealing being itemized on each school. It's very important. When you don't crack seal, you get potholes. When you get potholes, the price goes four times as what the crack sealing would have cost. If you want to go over to Mohermit right now, we got a pothole out there that is going to be open, I get done shortly, and I'm planning on doing it. And the biggest thing is crack sealing throughout the district. Potholes, we have a few potholes, not too many, but we have erosion issues around the perimeter of the schools, and we're always bringing up the grade flush around the schools so you don't get the pockets of water. So we're going to crack seal, we're going to use, bring in some gravel, but as far as the big projects here, we're going to try to fit them in the budget over the next couple of years. And that includes the church. We have an agreement with the district and the church over there at Mohermit to do some maintenance every other year, I believe, and it's due. I went over there and spoke with them, I did a walkthrough with a couple of vendors, and in order to get the grading where we need to be and deal with some flooding issues that we've had in Mohermit, in the back there, that path from the church to Mohermit, the, we have a barrier in place, but it's sort of uncompromised, so we have a plan for that as well. So it's a full obligation. It's going to cost roughly $800 there.
For the question?
Yep.
Could you share with us how the recent paving projects at Mastway and Mohermit are holding up?
The, at Mohermit, are you speaking to the entrance and the access road? Those are doing good. We have to do some line painting district-wide, and I'm going to figure out how much we have to do, but probably in the summer, we're going to hit at least the middle school with the Safe Roots to School people, we're working with them on, in the D P W on that front road there. But there is, to answer your question, yeah, the main entrance and the exit road up that goes towards the church there, those are in good condition.
And what about Mastway? That was a parking lot that-
Well, we have some drainage issues over at the corner where it overflows into the dirt area, and I've walked it with a couple vendors, and we think that we can, you know, there's no drains over there, so we think we can repitch it in a way where the water doesn't rest right in that corner, that it kind of goes over into the wooded area more so. And we're also looking, I proposed, is the, as you come in Mastway, not the turnaround, but the last right to get into Mastway School, everyone's parking on the front row there on that island. And I got a price for turning that, keeping an island, but minimizing it and adding about 15 to 20 spaces there, so got a cost for that as well. So we're going to see if that fits into the budget, but I, you know, wanted to get some numbers in front of everyone to understand that, you know, this is a big-ticket item. It needs to be addressed, you know, responsibly, and, you know, it starts with crack sealing, and they last. If you go around and look to where the areas that were cracked sealed, the crack sealing is holding. And I've seen projects that were done four, five, six years ago in crack sealing, and they're holding up. But there's a lot more, and, you know, I told him that I'd love to pave over everything and seal coat everything, but he told me, you know, seal coating isn't the way to go, and paving is way too much money, and no one's going to do it. So, you know, crack sealing is the way to go, and we're going to do it to, you know, just keep our parking areas the way they should be.
I hope that we would think twice about seal coating, especially in environments where we have lots of young, developing children-
Yep.
-and the environmental and health conflicts of ceiling asphalt.
Some summer capital projects at the high school. We are doing some auditorium structural and rigging preventative maintenance that are consistent with the recommendations made. We had an inspection done in April, and there's some rigging and structural repairs that need to be made, and we're going to be making those here over the next couple of weeks. And the auditorium sound system, we're getting intimate with that and trying to understand what we need to do over the next five years to keep it where we need it to be. So those are some items there. The middle school, we're going to renovate two more bathrooms this summer, as we did last year. That bid went out, it's been brought back in, and we have decided on one company, and we're meeting with them Friday, and they're going to break ground hopefully next week or the week after. Additional lockers are going to be installed at the middle school, so now the fifth graders, I believe, will have lockers, and everyone in the building will have lockers, so that's going to be a good thing for the middle school.
I have a question about the middle school. You talked about in the beginning of your presentation, you know, completing a job and setting expectations, and there was a project that was done, I think maybe several years ago, I'm not sure when it was done, and they put some foam on the ceilings to-
Yes.
-muffle sound.
Yes.
You talk about things that are not attractive, that is one of them, and, you know, I wanted to find out, you know, how much would it cost to rectify that? If we could go back to the vendor who did it, you know, expect them to come back and fix it, because, you know, I look at that, you know, you walk through that school, and it's an embarrassment, you know, to see that. You know, the bathrooms are being addressed, we have a plan there, but that one seems to stick out in my mind, and I just want to ask about that.
Yes, I've seen it, and I've walked it with Jay, and there is also another room that's having acoustic issues that we are proposing. I actually just got an email the other, this morning, I believe, from Lee about a vendor that can help deal with acoustical issues. I would propose a drop ceiling. They're in every other room except for two rooms over at the middle school, and I don't know why they skipped one of these rooms, and I think we're going to, me and Jay have been talking, we're looking to get that done. So that, what happened in that room wouldn't be my approach moving forward, and as far as fixing it, I can look into getting numbers for you on that.
I mean, it's more, I understand it's more of a cosmetic thing, but-
Yeah, I mean-
It's just really, you don't understand that, it looks really poor.
Yeah, I wish I had a picture of it, but it's not pleasing to the eye by any means. I mean, it might have been effective, but I don't know why it went that way, and, you know, we'll see, we'll put some numbers together.
Okay.
Mohermit, we are doing water heaters, we're doing the paving, not only the potholes out front, but if you go around back towards the basketball hoops in the playground, there's some erosion issues, so we're going to bring up the grading over there and prevent further erosion. The water heaters are in the ceiling. They've been there for 20, 25 years, and they've been failing, about one every year and a half, and we've been repairing them on an as-needed basis, but we are going forward and going to repair all of them, or the remaining eight over at Mohermit this summer. And as far as soffit repairs, that's the undercarriage of the roof. If you go around the outside of the roof, some of the areas have been compromised, and we plan on dealing with that this summer as well. And the grading throughout the perimeter to prevent those puddles, and the church per the agreement. Mastway, if you've ever walked in the front door and looked up, it doesn't look good, and we plan on painting that white this summer. And we're going to paint the gym, and hopefully break ground on some parking lot improvements as well. We had some training on Monday on the power scrub techniques with the custodians. We plan on this year, or we're not planning on it, we actually have done it, we're eliminating about 80% of the stripper used throughout the district. Stripping floors, not only will we not be using it, it won't be going into, you know, the drainage system and into our, you know, into the environment. We have power scrub techniques that we've been using that utilize water, and we were training them on those techniques, and it's only been two days, and they've already implemented it. If you want to go to the middle school cafeteria or the third floor, rooms 301 and 304 of this building, you can see the results of it. We're projected to come in under budget on the summer, summer help, part-time people in the whole project there, so that's good news. Arriving on the 2nd of July is the part-time employees. They're going to work for eight weeks, supplementing our full-time staff. That's going to include a painter at each school for four weeks, so we plan on painting here for four weeks, and painting at the middle school for four weeks, and then those two individuals are going to go to the elementary schools for the last four weeks. So, you know, that's 14 employees total, and coming in under budget is what we plan on. Some groundwork throughout the district, we're doing lot lining, painting, the Safe Roots to School, as I spoke to, over at the middle school. We are doing some vendor lawn treatment analysis, trying to get some sort of supplemental support as far as maintaining our fields. I think, you know, I think we, there was no history. I went back, and for whatever reason, two years ago, treatment stopped, and I started asking questions, and we're looking to see if there's something that can work there for us. And that includes seeding of the sports fields. We're going to be doing some brush and hedge trimming. We've already done a lot, and, you know, that's sort of what our grounds people are going to be focusing on this summer is, you know, it gets out of control, and we're trying to deal with it district-wide, so that'll be something we're working on. The grading of the perimeters we spoke about, and, you know, paving, we already spoke to as well. Beginning on June 18th, Aramark is going to be providing the district with a second shift supervisor at no additional cost for the duration of the contract. It's one of the needs that I focused on, where I identified in the beginning here. It'll also fill the need for a licensed trade. This individual, he will be not only managing the, managing all the custodians, but he will also be conducting, he's a licensed H V A C refrigerant technician, so he'll also be conducting P Ms on all the air handler units. He'll be monitoring the controls at a higher level on the second shift, and he'll also be potentially conducting saving food service on the P M costs associated with the refrigeration boxes. You know, that's $3,000 to $5,000 a year savings there, as well as, you know, if a refrigeration unit goes down and the compressor failed, well, we can have a new compressor here overnight, and he can install it, and, you know, that wasn't always the case, and I think we're going to bring some value there as well. And that's sort of what I suppose to do. This person will obviously lead the custodians, like I said, P M, C M, and schedule confirmation. He'll work hand-in-hand with Rich Verville, who's the first shift supervisor, meeting with the lead custodians, conducting safety rounds, doing training, monitoring life safety systems, and helping reduce energy district-wide. Aramark Education is bringing in E S S. Our E S S team will, they're going to come in and help commission the other three schools. We have pro controls in the other three schools, and we are completing that project over the next couple of weeks. And then Aramark's going to follow through and make sure that everything they said they did actually is the case, and that's built into our contract. And we're also going to have them come in next week, and they're going to audit our seasonal usage systems, so we're going to get a second pair of eyes on all of our space heaters and things that come on and off with the seasons, and they're going to put an extra set of eyes on all that for us, which is built into the contract as well. So those people are going to be here probably next week. And then air and water, you know, kind of basics to facilities. You know, the Mohermit and Mastway testing is current and posted on the D E S website, and of course, the high school and the middle school is done by the D P W. A H A is the Asbestos Compliance Act that we are held to follow. We have a big binder on it. We are asbestos-free throughout the district, and our only obligation moving forward is to notify people if we notice it during construction, but we're essentially free of asbestos. Another thing with air quality that's been brought up over the past couple of days is radon. We are, we've tested for radon in the past six months. We're going to test it again this next month coming up and see if we can find some consistencies. There were a couple of areas- There were a couple of areas that were close to the range of requiring a follow-up test, and we found those tests, we touched base with the state and actually New Hampshire's state radon director, they didn't have money in the budget for, so I had to go to the federal people, and, you know, so we're being compliant with that, and those test results will be out probably in another couple of weeks, but I do have the ones we did in November in my office. And the CFM hour, each air changes are four to twelve, changes per hour, and we're adhering to that. Life safety systems, these are all key functions of facilities, I'll go through them quickly, boilers, fire extinguishers, sprinklers. We're doing our sprinkler testing actually next week at the middle and high school on Wednesday, I believe. Emergency lighting was done in April, but these are basic functions that a facilities department takes care of, and you can see whether they're annually or biannually here, which ones we're doing and when. And a lot of it's based on season or when the students arrive, so these are things that we're taking, making sure we get done. We're doing asset confirmation at the other three schools, making sure what's in our system is actually the asset on the roof or in the building, and then we're scheduling PMs accordingly based on frequency and whatever we're, you know, whatever we need to do there. And we're also going to track corrective maintenance completions. Last month, we completed ninety-three percent of the corrective maintenance work orders put in by administration and staff, and for whatever reason, you know, that last seven percent, you know, could have been stuff that we're going to wait until it's summertime or, you know, didn't, we didn't get to for whatever reason, but ninety-three percent was our number in May. And just some safety items that we do, pre-shift safety meetings, safety briefs, we talk about PPE requirements, we really, we really stress it, you know, not only at our Aramark accounts that have all Aramark employees, but we try to mirror that program here with our district employees, making sure they follow all the protocol there. And these are some of the directives that we go by, weekly director meetings and walkthroughs that I do, and as well as management. Sustainability committee is one of the committees that I'm on. We are, right now, we're studying composting, it's, we're conducting a feasibility study throughout the district, and we're going to report back to them midsummer on our findings, but it's one of the things that they asked me to research, and I've been doing it. And waste services, recycling consolidation, we have a lot of areas where we bring recyclables and trying to figure out a way to consolidate it, so it's, you know, not being stored so long. And we had some kind words from a few of the administrators throughout the district regarding some of the things we have done, so I thought I'd share them, they were very nice and we appreciate it. Graduation was something that went very smooth and appreciate all the staff's work. And there's my contact information, if anyone feels the need to ask me anything, I'll get back to you right away, and do you have any questions here from the board?
Just, you mentioned that Energy Solutions Services, just to kind of keep straight who's who, how's that related to what Siemens done, has done here at the high school?
Yes. Energy Services, that is a Aramark, a division of Aramark, right? That support the accounts regionally in the northeast area, and they're going to come in, and they, what they do is they approach the account manager and they, you know, not only is it built into the contract that we do this, but it's something that, you know, they had a meeting with me and they asked me where they could be of value, and I think the seasonal shut-offs as well as the commissioning of the other three schools' energy programs is a place to, you know, spend that money, so we're going to do that, and I believe we're going to do it with Siemens as well. Siemens is going to come in and analyze the energy-saving opportunities at the other three schools, so there'll be some comparison there, and, yeah, it's a division of Aramark that supports us, you know.
Earlier on, you mentioned additional support coming on supervisor on the second shift. Is that a position that we should anticipate will continue beyond this current contract? Do you anticipate the need for that, or is that to conduct work?
No, I think that's a long-term need, and, you know, moving forward, it's going to be, you know, he's going to be here for the duration of this contract, and we would like to build that in moving forward, and, you know, whether, whether our agreement here grows or whether the scope stays the same, we feel it's very necessary, and that's why we've provided it. I think we need it moving forward, it's the same model used in other locations and it's successful, and, you know, not only is he bringing that higher level of, you know, custodial management, but he's also conducting, he also fills the need for that licensed HVAC technician that is crucial. I mean, I can show you the vendor numbers for calling, calling in people to fix refrigeration boxes or window units or, you know, Cory's cooler that is in my, within my boiler room, and he uses it for, you know, vending on during games, you know, well, that's going to be out there shortly to be, I think that, I think we kind of killed two birds with one stone with this candidate, and we're glad to have him on board.
I have a question, I'm just confused with the whole automated control system, so Mohairamit, Mastway, and the middle school don't, I mean, they don't have the same automated control system that we have here in the high school?
No, they don't.
So that's, is that something in the future that we're looking at, or, I mean?
With per-federal guidelines, the infrastructure in all the buildings has to be compatible with any front end that you put on it, kind of like, you know, our internet works no matter what computer's plugged into it. So, essentially, consolidation is a possibility. I walked in to a project that was three-quarters the way done at the other three schools, and we are currently, you know, waiting for that to be done and holding out payment until it is done. So, it's pro controls at the other schools, it's Siemens at this school. Not as much functionality at the other schools as you have here, but still the basics are there, and, you know, we intend on getting them right in short order here, so. They've been cooperating.
I have a question about how projects and work is bid, you know, we've contracted you to manage, for example, like a roof project. Would that be something that would be Aramark putting out for bid or Oyster River, and how do we get visibility to those things?
I, what I go by the district standards, which include up to five thousand is superintendent VA approval, ten thousand is that public bid, and we've already done that with two of our projects. The bathroom renovation as well as the locker project over at the middle school, those both went out to public bid, and we actually had the public opening for the locker project yesterday, and the bathrooms last week, so we've, you know, we're following the district standard, so it's all public information.
Okay, I just wanted to ask about that.
Yeah, we, and as far as the roofs and stuff like that, basically, you know, I can give you the drawings, but, you know, what's under warranty is under warranty by the guy, contractor who had done it, and, you know, whatever's remaining to be done, depending on, you know, how much that work costs, you know, it'll, it'll, you know, I'm getting competitive bids no matter what, but it's a public bid over ten thousand, and that's kind of how we operate.
I have another question, it's unrelated, about the Mohairamit modular classroom.
Yes.
And, you know, obviously, we're paying a fee for that, and are we doing, are we responsible for the maintenance of?
We are, it depends. If it has to do with the integrity of the building, foundation, structural, Skiavi would be responsible, but we do, there's a, there's well-defined maintenance items, like we do the emergency, the emergency lighting. We bill it back to them, but as far as like, you know, cosmetic stuff or, you know, toilet, you know, repairs and things like that, we do that. And I believe that agreement's up next year, and Dennis is hoping we can get rid of it after next summer based on enrollment, so.
I think that that's something that kind of rolls into a greater discussion, but, you know, I know that's something we, you know, you look at how much we've spent on leasing that.
I think it's twelve to fifteen hundred a month.
Yeah, it's a lot, it's, you know, and I think that we need to look at how we can phase that out. It's like seventeen, I think, maybe.
Yeah.
When I look at the invoices, I see it.
No, yeah.
Yeah.
So, it's in pretty decent condition, we power watched it, and, you know.
But I guess the point is that I think we should recognize that we're not, there's additional costs associated with it, not just the leasing costs, that there's, it's actually costing the district more than just that fee that we're paying.
Correct.
You know, and so it's really in our best interest to, you know, stem that and be able to have, you know, housing otherwise, other places.
Yeah, no, we, I've read the agreement, and we, I refer to it every time, there's something that comes up, and, you know, try to understand who owns it, who the repairs belong to.
Thank you.
Back to the Energy Solutions and the other high schools, do you anticipate the kind of savings that the high schools saw when you do those efficiency audits and things like that at the other schools?
Well, well, that's not really what it entails, I think what it's going to do is, is we're going to first go in there and make sure the equipment is actually doing what it was designed to do based on the work that was specked out to this company. So, that's kind of like the commissioning process, that's, so as far as getting that baseline information and then further trying to, you know, see what we can build upon that, you know, that's kind of another step down the road.
Thank you. What happened to the one who owned schoolhouse? Too complicated. Announcements and commendations, district.
Jerry Rashad, principal of the middle school. Special thank you to all the staff, students, and parents for, we wrapped up an outstanding school year last Thursday, and also Todd's very fortunate, the class of 2016 will be coming to him in a couple of months, and what an exceptional group of kids. We'll miss them, and thank you to the parents, we had an eighth grade celebration last week that was just exceptional as well, the decorations. Parents volunteer all this time to do this and set this up for the kids, and I remarked the past couple of years, we could actually, speaking of renting out space, we could have a wedding in the spot that they actually create for the kids, great work. Safe travels to Sandy Wallace, she's wrapping up her work, she's been a secretary in my school for the past fourteen years, and she's been frantically making sure she has everything lined up for the teachers, as Sue Caswell could probably attest with our requisitions. This is money we already have budgeted, of course, so don't get nervous, but making sure that all the teachers are set up for everything they need to start the school year. And I know Brian just stepped out, but I do want to remark, he's done a great job since he came aboard, I've been very impressed. We did the office renovation last year, and we have air conditioning in the office, and it's never worked, as soon as Brian came aboard, it's been working since, so we feel fortunate of that. And also, just a quick note, thank you to Superintendent Leveque, he's done an outstanding job this year, I've been very fortunate to work with him, and I guess the quick compliment, as a school leader, I always need to model to my students and staff that I'm always willing to learn and get better, and he's been an excellent teacher this year, thank you, Lee.
Thank you.
I wanted to just start out by just complimenting Brian Cherry and the facilities people for the work they did on the night of graduation, I mean, for most people who went, they didn't realize what had gone on during the day leading up to that, there were threats of high winds and thunder showers and a whole bit, and so they literally set up two entire graduations, and, you know, and literally at eleven o'clock on the day of graduation, I go to Brian and I say, "Brian, we got a problem, we got to have a backup plan, I really want to have graduation outside because that's really where traditionally it's been, but what are we going to do if the weather turns?" Without missing a beat, Brian and Richard and all the guys said, "Okay, no problem, we're going to set up the gym." And in the span of two hours, they had moved into action. I want to thank Alexander Taylor, he was working on the sound work for outside, he came in and said, "Okay, this is what we can do, we can't do everything exactly the same inside, but, you know, we can do this," and by, fortunately, at four o'clock, I was able to make the call, we're doing it outside, the weather had passed, we didn't need it, but the bottom line is the work still got done, and we were ready to host two entire graduations, had we needed to. I'm glad I didn't have to do that, but thank you to everybody for that. Couple of quick congratulations, for those who didn't see in the paper, John Bromley, a science teacher at the high school, was named Dover Chamber of Commerce Teacher of the Year and won a one thousand dollar award for that, which he's going to be able to use to enhance his classroom and the science program, so, you know, he's a fine example of some of the great teachers we have here. On the subject of congratulations, I had the pleasure going up to Concord on Saturday to the New Hampshire Student Film Festival, we had four of our students who had made it through a very rigorous screening process to the film festival. Ian Avery Leaf and Chad Burns, a video, if you haven't had a chance to check it out, it's on our website, it's called Color My World, they were given the second prize for the jury award, so out of all the films that were there, they were second out of thirty-seven films, I believe, that were previewed up there, it was a fantastic film, and Alexander Hobbs is a heck of an actor, so check it out. And one last bit of business, grades for the year will be posted on Power School by the end of this week, I do want to, and I think Jay probably wanted to mention this too, but I'll mention it. Middle school, high school grades will be posted by the twenty-second, but it's really important that people understand that with Power School, we have to roll the information over into the next year, so parents, families, please check the grades by June twenty-ninth, because after June twenty-ninth, all the data has to be rolled into the next year and you won't be able to access it through your portal, so please make sure that you do that. We'll, we'll be sending out an email the next day or so to say, "Grades are there, go check it," but make sure you do it before June twenty-ninth. Did I say June twenty-ninth enough times? And lastly, I also would like to echo what Jay said, it's been a pleasure working with you, Lee. You know, this was a very challenging year for many of us in many ways, and appreciate all the work you've done, so thank you.
Ditto.
And, do we have any announcements, commendations from the board? Leveque too? And?
Last evening, an event was held to honor Lee and Danielle and Chris Gallo and Philip Schlichter, and I'd like to read what I read last night to honor all of their service. It was a lovely affair, it was a small intimate group that attended, and yet I'm hoping they all felt well-supported. Thank you for coming out last evening to acknowledge and celebrate the contribution and work of our Director of Instruction and Technology Danielle Bolduc, Mastway Principal Chris Gallo, Director of Instruction and SPED Phil Schlichter, and Superintendent of Schools Lee Leveque. These fine individuals have served and positioned the district to continue moving forward and serving the needs of all of our students' educational needs. Their legacy is large and indelible. From introducing and implementing technology to enhance the delivery of instruction, embracing the examination and alignment of our curriculum, encouraging building and district staff collaboration, examining and improving the delivery of SPED services, creating and implementing systems to ensure district accountability to work tirelessly as a team to meet and satisfy the rigorous requirements of No Child Left Behind. I'd also like to acknowledge the personal sacrifices inherent in all of their accomplishments. Each one of you gave an extraordinary amount of your personal time away from your families to meet the endless demands of our district. Good luck in your future endeavors, you'll be missed. Thank you very much to you, Lee, and to the other members who aren't here this evening.
I have two quick ones. First, to the, everybody who put in all the work at the Oyster River Middle School Jazz Band, the concert they put on at the Portsmouth Music Hall was really phenomenal, and a real credit to a middle school band to be able to do that. And the second is to everybody who's put in all the work getting the pumpkin patch at Mohairamit up and running, it's pretty incredible to watch, all those kids out there, and obviously, there's a lot of parents that have put in a lot of work setting up the irrigation system and tilling and doing all that, and I hope it's a successful harvest this fall. it's a successful harvest this fall.
Tom?
I'd just like to echo the thanks to Lee for what you've done. I think you've been a great gift to this community. I think you came at a time of real division, and I think you've just been a tremendous steadying influence, a wise head, and a real gift to those of us that came on the board recently. So thank you so much for everything you've done, and it's been a terrific pleasure working with you.
Thanks.
Ditto. Anybody else? Um, discussion ideas?
Okay, moving on. At some point, the board had asked that I invite Dr. Katie Lilly and William Leslie to, I guess, just talk briefly about what they do for work, and have a conversation and for an opportunity for you to get to know them. We did have the district treasurer invited also, but she was, had a confidence unable, so she'll have to come another time. So I would just like to invite them to come forward here and have a conversation, not exactly to go over the job description. It should be some chairs up here. There's one right here, and maybe grab another chair, both of you can come in. And just have a conversation with the board, explain what they do and their work, and respond to any questions that were made out.
Thank you for coming, and sitting through the night.
So perhaps we could start with William?
Sure. I'm a clerk. I live in the district. Madbury for 27 years. I was on the school board, one of your seats, back in 2000 when we did the renovation for the school here, so I did my three-year stint on that. I'm an engineer, so I don't do it clerk normally. I do this part-time, obviously. Most of my duties here are from January to March, okay? In January, the filing period begins, and I make myself available to collect people who are willing to, you know, serve on the board, like yourself. And then what we do is I work, you know, in collaboration with Wendy, there's a lot of duties that, she does a lot of the work, really. She gets, she should get most of the credit, but, you know, the ballots get posted. So the filing period, and one of the other key things I do is take minutes at the annual meeting. So I do that, and usually have a laptop there, like you guys get a laptop here, and I usually send them to her that evening, so she has them, reviews them, and then we get them sent off to the state wherever they need to go. And then during election night, I make myself available at the high school when the ballots are counted, and then tally up along with the moderator, and we announce who the winners are in this year. It was Al, Tom, and Maria. Ed, where's Ed? Yeah. It's pretty much it. I know we developed a new job description this year, so, yeah. Anything else?
I have one question after sitting through the, you also do the candidate forum-
Yes.
-at the high school. So, you know, to grab on to John's idea, maybe a suggestion for next year, and I swear I've never used Twitter, but it seems to me it'd be a nice thing if, because it was like somebody could call in or whatever, that somebody, you had that access, that if a community member could Twitter in a question-
Oh, sure. Yeah, something considered. Yeah, good idea.
Not that I know how to use it, but.
Not that hard.
Anybody else?
So you also swear us in?
Yes, I, yeah, I do that, too. I forgot that one.
I remember that day.
Yeah, swear you in, do that. So it's not a, it's not a stressing job. Certainly not like being on the school board. It's very, very seasonal.
Well, thank you. It's nice to have a face on.
Thank you.
My turn?
So I'm a family physician. I say I treat all ages, nursery to nursing home, but don't ask me to deliver any babies. I've been practicing for five years, since moving here to Durham with my family. And I spend part of my time practicing in Durham, and the other part in Newington. For the past two years, I have been serving as a school physician, which, the job description was finalized, I guess, this year, but so far has meant mostly being a liaison to the school nurses, and being available to them anytime they have questions or concerns, maybe about a student that they're not sure if the medication management is appropriate at school, they want to double-check a medication order that has been given to them. They're very, very astute nurses, and I know when they call, they really have a good question. And sometimes we all learn from their calls and questions. In general, I probably get two issues a month, and that may be a very quick phone call or email, and it may be a more in-depth kind of day-to-day conversation, maybe meetings with administration or families. It really just depends, but mostly just to be available to them. We also get together a few times a year in the evening to talk about issues that they may, trends they may be seeing, issues they've encountered, kind of all come together as one group.
Questions?
And it could be issues to communicable disease that you would be advising them on, and you could also be playing a role advising parents in the school, and the principals as well, what to do relative to that. So although such positions are required by law, it's most advisable, and I believe most school systems would have someone that they use on a consulting basis like this, and I'm sure that the nurses feel very supported by having a physician that they can contact regarding issues. And, you know, during the year, I mean, I have a frequent visit to schools, and I do pop in most places, and the school's nurses' offices, while I pop in as well. And if you saw today, the level of care that is needed with students, the types of medication, there's the responsibilities that school nurses have, you would want them to have a support system as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming.
School Board Committee Updates. Now-
The ABC met, and it was their first meeting since, kind of their organizational meeting, kind of like our first board meeting of the year. And they re-elected Ann Knight as the chair, Tom Merrick was the vice chair, and David Taylor's the secretary. They have gone to all four of the schools and visited them. It was, I did one at Massway, which was facilities report, essentially. Went and looked at the boilers, and had a chance to talk to the custodians, just to get a feel for the school. And their next meeting is July 16th.
I talked to Krista, who was a member, who was appointed to the Communications Committee, and she has asked to be relieved from that duty. And if there's no objection, I would like to ask Gal to step into that slot-
Sure.
...since he keeps talking about the communication.
That's right.
Board comments. I thought we struck that, too. We did, we did, so it's gone.
Didn't we strike correspondence as well?
Yes, we did.
You did.
We did scratch. Approval of the minutes. I have asked for minor changes, some spelling.
What is it?
There were a couple things.
One was Catherine Flur, wasn't it? Just the spelling of her name.
Okay. I think it's on, let's see, action items, C. And I think it's, and immediately approved policy, B E D B, and there's no R. Okay, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, is that, is that, hyphen R is removed? Okay?
Got it, thank you.
Okay.
So with those changes, do we have a motion? Move by Al. Second by Megan.
You can fight for it.
And E, discussion? Hearing none. Good point. Nice to our hands. Sixty-three per, motion carries. The manifests have been approved. Closing actions. Agenda planning, setting review, future agenda items.
I just, okay, sorry. The, under the agenda, I'll just note that you do have, under items for Dr. Morris, the items of strategic planning, cost for high school graduation tent that was brought up, curriculum review cycle, the math program, which is the everyday math, the district listserv, drug and alcohol education is one that has not yet been reviewed, the visas, and District Treasurer, we've already taken, the, hasn't, Van Hadjop never had a copy? Okay, so those will be items left.
Future meeting date, 7/18, and date 15.
Can I have, I have an agenda item for a future meeting.
Okay.
Well, he listed the ones that we talked about. I came up with a new one between then and now, surprisingly.
In the last three seconds?
Well, he listed what we talked about last time. But, no, today's a new day, new meeting. I think it, I would, I'd like to hear about our students in Oyster River High School who have received special commendation in music and art, you know, we obviously, we heard about the student athletes. I'd like to hear about any students, I don't know, we have an all-state choir course, or, you know, music-
We do.
...and those types of things. I'd be very interested to hear about that.
So what's the agenda item?
To have Todd, or someone in the music-
Report?
You know, report. It would be a report on-
Non-athletic.
Non-athletic.
Yeah.
Extracurricular.
Yeah, not extracurricular, it's, I mean, it's, I don't know what you would call it. It's not necessarily extracurricular.
Co-curricular? Is this what you're referring to?
Like music. Did a student get-
Those are usually referred to as co-curricular.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'd like to know what we've achieved-
Sometimes, yeah. I'll discuss with Todd and see if he can come up with a, what you, as we have-
Thank you.
Thank you.
I also have another agenda item for a future meeting, sadly, when Lee won't be here. In light of a comment by a community member regarding their concern for the perception that our young men are not necessarily as engaged as our females are engaged, I would like to continue the discussion on possible factors contributing to that. One would be our system of ranking and not weighting classes, and how that possibly plays into what is the perception of lack of engagement, where in fact, it may just simply be a lack of awarding merit where it's earned.
So what's the specific agenda item, what would it be?
Gender bias and-
And-
Weighting grades.
Weighting grades.
Okay.
I would love to see a report on the history of the graduation awards. Was this a fluke this year, or is this a trend? Anything else? With that?
Motion to adjourn?
I have a motion to adjourn. Well, was a show of hands.
Thank you, Lee.
Where?
Thank you.
Congratulations.